Go ahead, start with the action. Why don't you leave this?
To the flyer of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Call please.
Holan.
Here.
Hofstetter.
Here.
Vaughn.
Here.
Khan.
Here.
Hafey.
Here.
Schumaker.
Here.
Thank you. Do you have any visitors that wish to address council this evening?
I'll be a visitor tonight. I want to make sure we recognize the football team. Another undefeated season. Didn't quite end up the way what everybody thought, but still a great year.
Thank you. May you have motion to spend the reading in minutes?
So move.
I'll second that.
Holan.
Aye.
Hafey.
Aye.
Schumaker.
Aye.
Khan.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Hofstetter.
Aye.
Any additions or corrections? You have motion to pass.
I so move. Schumaker, second. Khan.
Schumaker.
Aye.
Khan.
Aye.
Holan.
Aye.
Hofstetter.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Hafey.
Aye.
Thank you. Bill was the bill resolution two thousand twenty-two days twenty-six. Any questions on bills this evening?
I do. Nate, with the dump truck fix, was that just to keep it going till the new one comes?
Yeah.
Is that? Okay.
Yep. And our backhoe is down there right now. One of the backhoes is down there. We haven't heard yet exactly what the diagnosis is, but yeah, it's there as well.
Any other questions? You have motion to pay the bills.
I so move.
Second.
Hafey. Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Schumaker.
Aye.
Khan.
Aye.
Hofstetter.
Aye.
Holan.
Aye.
Thank you. Chief. Thank you. Nate?
All right. Designer Board approved signage for, it's called Sweet on Jackson, next door here, one thirty-eight West Jackson Street for upstairs. Short-term rental location. The two thousand twenty-two resurfacing is complete. The manholes were done about two weeks ago. Striping's all done, so that's all wrapped up now. The final bill is on the bill resolution, as I'm sure you noticed. We also have legislation on the agenda for the tap, the sidewalk project. That's for the, to actually go forward with the next steps where the plans are submitted and then they bid them out. This is going to be an ODOT let project, meaning they bid it out and assist with that end of it. Nothing new really on our storm sewer project. Plans are still being developed. Nothing on the demolition or the vacancies. Leaf collection's been pretty busy the first couple of weeks here, three weeks. This week is the third week. We'll continue on till, like normal, till most of the leaves are down and then we'll switch to bag leaves. And then residents always have the option as well after that to dispose of them in the Kimball bins. The Appalachian Community Grant. We had a couple of meetings on this out at the fairgrounds now. After the last one, Chris Young, myself, Omega, there's, there's, I don't know, half a dozen, eight different people and agencies. The Health Department is one of them. Home Center for the Arts. I'm drawing a blank on the others right now off the top of my head, but we're going to be meeting, it's actually tomorrow, we're going to meet to begin discussing what our individual projects are. Looking over the state's guidelines. There's, there's a planning grant. Each county can apply for up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for technical assistance, design work, preliminary work, that kind of thing. So we're going to apply for that. The way this grant is structured, it's with the scoring criteria, you have to have multiple facets to the grant to be competitive. That's why we're all pooling together. Instead of everybody individually applying, they're encouraging one big application comes from like a county agency with all these sub-projects in it, so we'll be doing that. I brought one of the handouts, if you want to take a look at it. The, the technical assistance is part of it, and then there's the development grant is the second part, and that's up to fifty million dollars that's available. So that's, that's why they're wanting large applications to come in. And they want them to be, they're, they're stressing downtown infrastructure, which isn't traditional infrastructure, so. Examples of that would be Main Street, street revitalization, downtown redevelopment, public-private partnerships, murals, building renovations, mixed-use developments. The, there is some infrastructure, structural improvements, like lighting, street and sidewalk accessibility, infrastructure. That's what I'm looking at for us specifically. You know, we, we budgeted money for this west end lighting. Got to thinking the other lightings, we're pushing thirty years on that now. We're having more and more issues with it, just like Glen Drive. It's, it's aging out and causing issues. I'm thinking this would be a prime opportunity to come in and run new power everywhere, downtown, new lights, new fixtures, the decorative fixtures. Sidewalks, the downtown sidewalks aren't horrible, but there, there's spots that, well, more than spots, they're, they're very uneven in places. There's not big offsets, but there's a lot of up and down and rolling terrain. It'd be nice to get that all improved. Kind of babbling here, I apologize, but the, the key components of the development grant, they want an infrastructure component, a healthcare component, and a workforce component. So that's why you're going to see the application come from multiple agencies. And I'll, I'll pass this around. You're more than welcome to.
Can you copy of it?
Yeah, I can send out copies too. I'll scan it and send it out.
Copy then.
Sure. Okay. Yep. So we're going to be doing that. I actually got invited to participate with, I believe it was Zanesville and whatever the county down there.
Gurnsey. Gurnsey, Muskingham.
Yeah. They, they were putting together a group as well, so there's no, there's no real borders to this, but I felt it'd be far more appropriate to stay in Holmes County if we could put together a good competitive project, so. That's what we're working on for that. PFOS, cost recovery. So Bob and I and Nate Skolich. Started out, Ohio Rural Water sent out information that they had, I guess, retained a firm to represent them, or to, to offer representation for anyone that wants to join public water systems and wastewater systems. In any potential cost recovery for claims that come from PFOS, which is per and polyfluoroalkyl substances, which are the forever chemicals that we're all hearing so much about anymore. These are prevalent in airports firefighting. Like the firefighting foam that they use. Manufacturing was another big one. Landfills, I believe. We were sampled by the EPA in October of two thousand twenty, I believe it was, or twenty-one. We didn't have any show up in our water, which is great, but that can change at any time, so. They sent us this information to join the rolls with this firm. There's no cost. We reviewed it, Bob reviewed everything.
Contingent fee.
Yeah. So basically they.
They don't get paid unless they get a recovery for us.
Right. So my understanding in the future, if we do have a claim or we do, this does show up and we have damages as a result of it, this firm would represent us in cost recovery, so. Kind of an insurance policy, I guess, if you want to look at it that way. So we did enroll with that. We were notified our new dump truck should be coming the first week of December. That was as of like three weeks ago, so that was exciting. I wasn't expecting that. The salesman actually just stopped in out of the blue one day and said he had good news for me, so that was good. Aggregation, I didn't have it on my agenda. It just came in today, and I apologize, I was out sick Friday, so I, my report isn't complete. I tried to do it from home. Obviously didn't get it all in there. So the market, they're starting to see a little bit of long-term stability in, in aggregation. He sent me, our rep at Aspen, sent me some rates as of today. We'd be looking, our last rate was five, five forty, I forget exactly what I should have wrote that down, mid-five cents per kilowatt hour. Right now, it goes from eight forty-six at twelve months to seven seventy-five at forty-eight months. It gets less as you go out. That's for, I'll pass this around as well. For fixed rate. I looked at the, just before the meeting, I pulled off the AEP, apples-to-apples comparison chart. The current price to compare is seven thirty-two. That's as of today. The twelve to forty-eight month rates are anywhere with, with another supplier are ranging from like eight cents to sixteen. So I think, well, there's one at nineteen cents. That wouldn't be a very good deal. You can take a look at those as well if you want. He wanted to see if we're at a point where we want to get back into the aggregation or we want to wait and see what, what the market's going to continue to do. I think it's going to be a while till we, if we ever get back to, I don't know that we'll ever get back to the rates we had before, but that is a pretty competitive, thirty-six seems to be a pretty good rate.
Did you see the article the county just locked in? I think it's six something.
I didn't.
Six point three cents, I think.
Really? For their, that, that's for theirs, not for aggregation?
Right. I mean, but, I mean, what would, I mean, they had a consultant come in and put, put the county buildings off the bid.
Yeah, and we do the same thing here. Ours is, I think it's like four point eight right now, is what we're paying. Yeah.
But you don't think we could give in that type of rate as for the village?
Not for the residents, not for the aggregation program.
That's what I thought it was.
That's what this is.
No, from the county.
No, they, they were just building their own buildings.
Oh. I know they also got a, not price on natural gas.
Right. We can't, we're in a co-op, so we.
Right, we can't do it. I know that. Stinks.
What, any thoughts on that? Continue to wait or? My fear is we lock into something for three years in the current market, who knows what's going to happen. I'm a little scared to do that. Residents always have, have the ability to, if they want to be vigilant and stay on it, they can do that themselves. I just, I'm a little afraid of locking into something and then six months down the road, the market totally drops out and we're looking at five, six cent rates as opposed to being locked in at seven and a half or whatever.
I think seven and a half seems a little high, still, in my opinion.
Yeah, I agree.
Compared to what we're doing now, yeah.
What is the AEP rate now with us?
Uh, it's on seven.
Seven two, something like that.
Two, seven three, something there, yeah.
I don't think any real cost savings or significant cost savings. I say we wait.
Yeah. There's always the flip side. It could continue to climb. But it's a tough call. I'd be in favor of just waiting. Continue to hold. Okay. There's a lot of uncertainty, things going on right now. And then the last thing I have is the capital improvement information I sent out. Is there any questions on that? Thoughts?
Yeah, I was looking at that. I had a couple of questions for you. With the twenty dollar, the smallest twenty dollar, it was a hundred fifty-seven thousand. So, I mean, even at twenty dollars, you, we could do water and part of the sewer, like, it would, it would, it seems like it would mathematically work it out to six years, even if we went with the twenty dollar and not ten.
Right. And I, after I sent this out, Karen and I were talking, I realized I kind of went about this part of it wrong. We're, we're not going to be able to do, I was thinking, just going down through here, I was thinking, you know, first year of water money, we could do this much. We aren't going to be able to divide the, the incoming money that way. It's going to have to be split.
Decide how much goes to water, how much goes to sewer, because you can't expect them to every.
Every January.
Change the water, change program for building. Yeah.
So I messed that part up. So I think roughly, I mean, if you, this still gives you a pretty good idea. You could do around seventy-five to eighty each year out of each.
For each one?
Yeah. So that would give you about, you know, this I was thinking would be a total of ten years if you'd go one and one, but stretch it out a little further that way.
And keep in mind that that's not going to, that seventy-five or eighty for each fund isn't going to be there until that first year's over.
So look at your number, it, it should be almost divided fifty.
Yeah.
Equally between the two funds.
Right. I would think that'd be the.
I, I mean, I mean, when you start looking at your yearly totals, whether water or sewer, almost, they're real close to each other.
Yeah.
Well, and that's, that's somewhat intentional. I tried to keep it equal.
What happens when, I mean, they're both what, six hundred and some thousand for the water, how much for the I mean, one would be paid off before the other or just?
No.
You can't do it?
No, I mean, this isn't a list that'll expire. This is going to be a continuing thing. Because once you, a lot of these items, once you get through a full cycle, your oldest one's going to need replaced again. Your oldest pumps, your.
Well, and even at the top timeframe, every one to two years, every three to five years, every, you know.
Well, no, that was, that was more of a sense of urgency. How soon do those items need? Yeah.
But yeah, I mean, we're always going to need the skin upgrades. We're all, you know, I mean.
Yeah, those are software items. Those, every so many years, they're going to be obsolete, not supported, so yeah, they're going to need replaced again.
And the radio reads five hundred and seventy-nine. That's going to take a little while.
Yeah.
On fire hydrants.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How about through American Recovery Act money? What happened? With that?
That's, I, we, that's what we've been talking about using for the storm sewer.
Okay, that's, right, okay.
So you still need a dollar amount in, in how to divide it up?
Right.
I think the last meeting, we talked about twenty-two fifty, meeting in the middle between twenty-five and twenty. That's something that council wants to pursue. Splaying the cost.
I'm going to look at, we'll get a little bit more done a little quicker and still return half, splitting it.
At that twenty-two fifty, it would put us in the one seventy range or something, one seventy-five, something.
So you're leaving commercial industrial alone based on these numbers?
No, no, no. We're talking the whole way across. Right?
Split, splitting the whole way across.
The whole way across.
So.
I'm good with that, twenty-two fifty.
Twenty-two fifty, forty-five, and ninety. Is that?
Yeah, I mean, just take, take each of them.
Take half of each across. So between twenty and twenty-five and twenty, in between sixty-five and seventy, in between one fifty-five and one sixty, the whole way across. That's where we're going.
Oh, that's interesting.
So this becomes sixty-seven fifty?
Yes.
Or, or everything, just half of that, that top money line?
Yeah.
Forty-five to ninety to one eighty.
No, no, no.
Half, half of all those.
No, but you can, if you look, industrial's at one eighty and he's proposing one fifty-five. If you take, if you cut it half on all three accounts, you're not, you're not even going to get a hundred thousand.
Yeah, that's true.
What if we only did it on residential?
No way. I wouldn't vote for that.
No?
No.
Well, is there a dollar amount you want to see come in?
Well, we thought it would be around one seventy-five, looking at these numbers.
Yeah, looking at the projects, that's sort of where I came to the one seventy-five at.
So if you go twenty-two fifty for residential, go sixty-seven fifty for commercial, and then go, I mean, do you want to split between one fifty-five and one sixty or just go one fifty-five? Or you, what do you want to do on industrial?
Split it.
Yeah.
We're splitting everything else.
One fifty-seven fifty.
One fifty-seven fifty, yeah.
Okay. So then we'll have an ordinance, we'll have to, right, we'll have to pass an ordinance with those new rates in them, and then how do you want, you want to divide it equally?
Equal.
Between water and sewer. Okay.
That'll make it easier for you, right, Karen, if they're divided equally?
For Mary.
For Mary.
For Mary. Okay, all right, good.
Yeah. I think that's the simplest thing to do.
Okay.
And I think it needs to be deposited into not the regular water and sewer funds, it needs to go in the RNI funds. It's an easier way to track that.
Yeah.
Gets mingled in with the operating funds. I'm afraid it's going to get lost in the shuffle, so.
Yeah.
And we can't transfer money from the two RNI funds, right? From water RNI to sewer RNI. It's got to be.
You can do water to water RNI, sewer to sewer RNI. You can't do sewer to water, make water to sewer.
On the billing statement, can there be something placed on that little card that everybody gets every, every quarter to indicate?
Yeah, we talked about that. There's very limited space.
I understand.
So we'll probably put like cap imp, capital improvement, something will come up with that's going to fit in there that shows what that amount is.
Okay, that's good.
So I think what you're going to have to do though is we'll have Bob get the legislation ready. You have first reading, next meeting. And then to get into the billing cycle, that they're going to send the bills out the end of December, we're going to have to probably have a second reading and suspend the third reading, the first meeting in December to get.
To get it in with the bill. Okay.
Still gives two meetings for public input.
I believe that's it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make, let me check with Mary Mar and see how many characters we have and figure out what we actually want to, that it will go to the RNI funds.
Right.
Which is capital provision.
Karen.
Hold on a second here. Okay. You should have received the October financial statement, and there's the acknowledgement sheet on that. In your packets also was the solicitor's contract that was up for renewal. So if you choose to accept that, the mayor to sign it, I need approval. Motion in second.
Make a motion to approve contract for legal services for Bob lines.
Khan.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Holan.
Aye.
Hofstetter.
Aye.
Hafey.
Aye.
Schumaker.
Aye.
And I believe I also emailed you the bed tax applications that were submitted by the four different entities. So you need approval to pay those. Those won't be until January, but that submission's in, so if you choose to approve those.
Make a motion to approve them. I'll second that. Khan.
Hofstetter.
Aye.
Khan.
Aye.
Schumaker.
Aye.
Hafey.
Aye.
Holan.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
The Tree City board members, those, three of those, the terms will be expiring the end of this year. And I did check with those three. Somewhere here. Arlie Rhodey, Doug Holan, and Brent Hofstetter. Those three terms will be up December thirty-first. Arlie would like to continue. Brent would like to continue, and Doug Holan is declining, so we'll have an opening on the, did I say bed tax?
Tree City.
I'm like, I have bed tax in my life. So I guess we need some direction from council on how you want to proceed with that, your appointments for the end of the year. Obviously, we have at least one vacancy, so.
So does that need to be a village resident?
I don't think the ordinance says that.
Could be anybody.
It's an appointment by the mayor with the approval of council. So.
We, we do have additional members that are not, you know, that are just community members that.
Attend meetings.
Advisory, advisory roles. I mean, would it be something to check with one of them to see if they would like to assume it or?
Could, or you, I mean, we could put something out there that anybody that's interested, send in your qualifications or whatever and let the mayor go over and then make his recommendation to you. I, that's, whatever you guys want to do.
I think it should be approached with the people that are attending the meetings, if they have an interest in being on the committee.
At least one.
This week, right?
Uh, yes, because at least one of them is a, a resident, so. I, I don't know. What, do you guys have any problem approaching them to see if they know and has an interest?
That's a great idea. And if there's multiple ones, then get that, just their names and.
Okay. Guess we can check during the meeting this week then, Nate.
Yeah, that doesn't, maybe you don't have to decide like right now, but I just wanted to let you know that at the end of the year, those appointments are going to be expiring, so.
Can we make a motion to approve the, the members that want to continue to remain on?
That's up to you.
I'll make a motion to approve of Brent Hofstetter, Arlie Rhodey to continue to serve after their term expires on Tree City.
I'll second that.
Khan.
Aye.
Hafey.
Aye.
Holan.
Aye.
Hofstetter.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Schumaker.
Aye.
Okay, and one more item that I had a conversation with CSB this afternoon. We currently, our checking account is, has a sweep account attached to it. So what that means is they sweep money from our checking every day to the sweep account, and it draws more interest than a normal checking account. So I think we'd be wise to get rid of the sweep account and go to what they call platinum savings. The interest rate currently on the sweep account is point seven five, which nobody's getting interest much of anything. CDs are low, so that's not an option either. If we move the majority of our money out of our checking into this platinum savings, we're going to be earning two point seven five.
Okay.
Which, over a year's time, depending on the cash balances, but we could be looking at eighty-seven thousand more in interest by doing that. We still have the luxury of, it would be an online banking, so I could transfer, say if we put the five hundred thousand dollars in checking and move the rest to the savings, I still have that option if, you know, we've got some large expenses. I can move money from the savings to the checking and vice versa. So I think it's a smart move.
That's just checking, no money?
It's checking, but then we will open up what they call platinum savings. So we'll have two accounts now. The sweep account was connected with the checking. Now we'll have two accounts, but it's all connected online, so we can, I can move it whenever we need to, so.
Is there any penalty for how many times you can withdraw on that? Is there any penalty for how many times you can withdraw on that savings account?
I don't think so, I'm, I need to talk more in detail with her tomorrow, but I told her I wanted to touch base with you and bring it up tonight, cause she called me actually about four thirty this afternoon, so I didn't have a lot of time to get all the details, but we're gonna talk tomorrow, but, um, I still think it's a smart move to do right now.
If those rates, I'd agree.
Yeah, yeah, that's a wise, wise money move.
We could, in a sense, um, move six million to the savings and keep a million in checking, and I, we're still gonna be fine, I think.
Good.
That was nice of whoever C S B was to contacted you.
C S B, yes.
Yeah.
Do you need a motion?
If you want me to go ahead and enter into that, unless you wanna wait until next meeting, they can get more information, but.
Are the rates gonna rise beyond that?
Yeah. And she said also that, you know, the rates are climbing, um, I said, well, what's the risk of them dropping? And she said, I don't think you're ever gonna drop down to that point seven five in a savings account, so I think we'd be safe and be a smart move to do it.
Yeah.
The only thing to check on is the penalty.
There's no penalty for, for transferring, but he was asking if, if there's penalty for so many different times, how many times?
Yeah, right, yeah.
I can't imagine we'd be doing it very often, we don't very seldom have bills over five hundred thousand dollars, so. But I will definitely find more details out, so if you wanna wait until the next meeting, um, we could start at like December first or
That sounds good.
You wanna wait and get more details?
Wait, yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right, good, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, excuse me, moving on to legislation, we'll second reading Resolution two thousand twenty-two dash twenty-five by title only. A resolution authorizing transfer of songs from the general fund to the street maintenance and repair fund, to the cemetery operating fund, to the police disability and pension fund, and to the sidewalk replacement fund. Are there any questions? Excuse me. First reading emergency resolution two thousand twenty-two dash twenty-seven by title only. A resolution granting consent to Ohio Department of Transportation, Director of Transportation to complete the Holmes County South Washington Street sidewalk project and declare an emergency, are there any questions? Maybe we have a motion to suspend the second, third readings.
I'll make the motion.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Poland?
Aye.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Khan?
Aye.
Hafey?
Aye.
You have motion to pass.
I so move.
Second.
Hafey?
Aye.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Khan?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Poland?
Aye.
Thank you, first read ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash one oh three by title only, an ordinance amending the sewer ordinance, chapter nine twenty-nine to eliminate the debt service charge, are there any questions? First reading emergency ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash one oh four by title only. The emergency ordinance approving the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances and resolutions as parts of the various component codes of the codified ordinances to provide for the adoption and publication of new matter, the updated and revised codified ordinances, and to repeal ordinances and resolutions in conflict therewith, are there any questions? We have a motion to suspend the second, third reading, so.
Okay. Vaughn?
Aye.
Poland?
Aye.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
Khan?
Aye.
Hafey?
Aye.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Maybe we have a motion to pass.
I so move.
Forgot where I was.
I'll second.
Hafey?
Aye.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Khan?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
Poland?
Aye.
Thank you, any committee reports? Old business. New business.
I do have something to bring up, um, we need to have a public hearing, uh, there's been a petition filed to, um, vacate an alley in the Glass Plan Edition, Mayor's Alley, you might be familiar with it. Um, well, it's called Mayor's Avenue, not alley, Mayor's Avenue, um, they're doing that, uh, subdivision there now, they wanna vacate the alley, which is sort of right in the middle. Um, I've reviewed all the documents, they just filed them today, we need to have a public hearing maybe five minutes before the next, um, council meeting, which would be the twenty-eighth, and then have three readings after that. I'll, I'll have the legislation ready that day, uh, for the first reading, and I, I don't know whether there'll be any objections, I sort of doubt it. But, uh, if there are, we can hear them at the next meeting.
Did, did you end up having to notify any surrounding property owners since, cause that's the one that the entire property is owned by?
Exactly, all, every parcel that's contiguous to the avenue is owned by Grandview Property Holdings LLC.
So there was no notification of any kind?
Yeah, no notification.
What about Silk Street, it runs down through there, and it's never been vacated back in there?
No, it hasn't, it, you can, here, I'll show you the plat, if you wanna look at it, um. Here's the street vacation plat that they had prepared by, uh, Baker Sevigny. Well, here's a smaller version, but, uh, Silk Street. It's not even showing up on this, it's between, uh, Coach or Cottage Street, I don't know.
And Carrie.
And then, and Carrie Street.
Well, Silk is north of both of those.
Be still, I'm marching.
Yeah, Silk stops like Doug's.
Soon as, originally stopped at Mayor's Avenue, though?
It originally did, yeah.
Yeah, but see, from that portion, it's not vacated whatsoever, and if he's trying to take it that way.
West, no, west of, Silk stops where it ran into Mayor's Avenue.
Right, which isn't gonna be non-existent.
Right.
Cause he's putting a new street back in here somewhere.
Right, this, Silk will continue, well, Silk will end where it ends now, their private street will continue on.
No, I mean, I agree with that, I just, there's a portion, I don't think he looks at it that way, of Silk Street. That part.
How is he looking at it?
It's his property.
Well, I mean, it's, oh, it's hard, hard.
Right.
Yeah.
Brent, I have something for you, since you are our Tree City guy. Um, my neighbors Larry and Eva Gingrich, two seventy-seven South Clay.
Okay.
Absolutely hate the oak tree that's out in front of their house, and it's still very young, Eva suggested we put it in a park. She would like a tree like mine, a Japanese silk, and she said, Kelly, I just wanna cut it down myself, and I'm like, let me see if we can get it moved somewhere else, so is that something that?
Was that one that we had planted?
Yes.
Okay.
Before, you planted it right before they moved into that house?
Okay.
And I, I tried to get her to, let me see what I can do, and.
Is that on the tree line?
It is on the tree line.
Then that'd be our responsibility.
Right. I mean, is, is moving something we have any interest in doing, or?
Well, we had another one, we were supposed to be moving this fall.
Oh, okay.
If it's small enough, they can.
I mean, it's small.
They should be able to, to save it.
Would you mind adding that to the list for?
Check with them tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay.
See if they can move it.
Okay, thank you very much.
And you said, are they?
We'll, we'll figure it out, just move the tree first, we'll figure out the rest later.
Okay. Not replace it right now?
Yeah.
Okay. What's?
Two seventy-seven, South Clay.
Two seventy-seven, I'm sorry, I know you said it.
That's okay.
The other new business.
Just wanted to announce that Quinn Circle is complete, the top coat's been put on, I think the, um, the guys that ply the streets in the, the snow will appreciate not hitting those manhole covers, um, looks really nice. It's a nice addition to the neighborhood in the village, so they just finished that up today.
This could be old business, new business, I'd like to have the Holmes Water and Soil come in, give us an update on the cleanup of Kilbuck Creek. Something that we really started three years ago.
You made contact with them late.
Yeah.
Anything else?
We don't have a definitive time and date for the public hearing, kinda jumped.
I just suggested five minutes before the next.
Cause we have to advertise that, so.
Need a motion for that?
No, just, you just need to tell me what time and date, so.
Six fifty-five.
November twenty-eighth, six fifty-five.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Before we go into executive session, we do need to discuss the meeting scheduled for December twenty-sixth, of course, that will be Christmas holiday. So would you guys wanna do the twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth?
Well, there'll be a lot of unfinished business at the end of the year then, or, I was gonna say move it to the first month, or, second Monday in January.
Does anyone have any conflicts, or we just push it to the next day, to the twenty-seventh?
I don't have any issues.
Anyone?
I'm on vacation.
December twenty-seventh at seven P M.
The what?
December twenty-seventh at seven P M, okay. Anything else? If not, maybe we have a motion to go into executive session to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official.
Second.
Poland?
Aye.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Khan?
Aye.
Hafey?
Aye.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Thank you very well, have a happy Thanksgiving.